We good? All right, we'll call the regular city council meeting Monday, September 8th, 7:00 PM to order. Roll call.
Joe Von Toma.
Toby Nelson.
Sam Solars.
David Paradise.
Michelle Otto.
Jessica Bonewell.
Jackie Hines.
Jared Vogie.
Ann Reimer.
All right, I do not see Pastor Kathy here for invocation. One stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'll be looking for a approval of the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Otto.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Von Toma.
Aye.
We'll vote aye, passes 5-0. Looking for a approval of the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve of the consent agenda.
I will second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Von Toma.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Otto.
Aye.
We'll vote aye, passes 5-0. Let's see, Wright County Sheriff, do not see them here. Kevin, you got anything to add? Okay, perfect. City Council reports.
Last month, I had council workshops, planning and zoning, and celebrate Montrose.
I had city council, meeting with Marysville, and Park and Rec.
City workshop, council, personnel meeting, celebrate Montrose, meeting with Marysville.
Council workshop, meeting with Marysville, personnel meeting, and celebrate Montrose.
Park and Rec, celebrate Montrose, workshop, council meeting, and Marysville.
All right, Montrose Fire Department. Kevin, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, in your packet, first item is the activity report. Slower month on calls, but we were busy with a lot of other activities and special events. Special acknowledgements go to Jackie Hines, she's been helping out a lot with fire contracts lately, and she's been instrumental in figuring all that stuff out, so thank you Jackie. 12-12 meets for assistance with pork chop dinner, all who attended our pork chop dinner. And then a special note that that money raised will be going to support families over the holiday season here. And then surrounding fire departments for coming to celebrate Montrose Parade, Watertown, Waverly, Howard Lake, Delano, and Rockford. Next item in your packet is fire chief appointment. So as is customary, every two years, the fire chief position becomes open. We posted and let all of our staff know that those interested needed to submit a letter of interest to City Hall, specifically to Jackie, by the end of day on August 29th. And you got one?
Mayor and Council, we received one application from Kevin Triplet.
No way.
Or a letter of interest, rather.
Questionable.
I have questions.
Yes.
Okay, so, since we're, when we talked in our strategic planning about doing job descriptions and all that kind of stuff, do we have a job description on fire chief?
Yes, we do, it's within the fire department policy manual.
Okay, okay, and then, do we do reviews on you?
Currently, no, because it's open every two years.
Right, but you do them on the captains, correct?
Because they're open every year, captains are. So we don't, we don't do any reviews on our staff.
Okay, so then who, who do you report to? Do you report to council or?
I report to the city administrator, who I report to, and council.
Okay, so how do we do, like, reviews and stuff like that?
We don't.
Shouldn't we?
That would be up to council.
That's what, yeah, that's my question. I just think it's good feedback and good learning, you know? Since kind of that's what we do within city staff and everything else, so. Council's thoughts?
I mean, it only makes sense to do it that way. But what are we talking, every year? If he's only appointed for?
Every two.
Two.
He's appointed every two, but, I mean, we do them on staff, you know, the reviews are every year, so.
I think if we're gonna do it, we would do it every, you know, after every year. Not to be coinciding with them putting in for the fire chief position. But more or less, you know, let's say if we were to implement that, we'd take 2025 and review in Q1 of 2026.
Right.
That's something that, you know, we can look at doing, I don't see a problem with it, but.
I don't see a problem with it either.
Not using it as a standard of who's gonna be the next fire chief.
Oh, no.
You know, I just want to make sure that.
Just fire chief in general.
Yep, you're saying that one year where he's not having to be reappointed, right?
No, I think just every, if we just leave it to every year, I think feedback's feedback. You know, I think it's good for anybody. So I think that that's a way that, you know, whoever's fire chief can potentially see any blind spots that they have within the department, because it would be a blind survey from the fire members on certain criteria that we can set forth in the questionnaire or something like that. But it'd have to be every question the same.
Yep.
Right, anonymously.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, so I think, along those lines, Personnel Committee could probably start.
I think that's where it should end up, is with Personnel Committee, and, I mean, as far as that process with city admin.
Yep.
Well, unfortunately, one of the Personnel Committees is on the fire department.
That's why we have a backup.
So, okay.
And Jess, I'll get together with you and we'll start hashing that out. Sound good? Perfect.
I just have another question, sorry. So when, if we have an emergency, do we have a plan? Because I don't think any of us really know, like if we had a fire at City Hall, or a tornado, or, what do we do?
That's a very loaded question.
You know me, Kevin, come on now.
We're gonna mitigate the initial issues and stuff, and then we do have an emergency operations plan, which is very similar, if not identical, to the county's plan. And we would rely on mutual aid partners and the county to assist us in the overall mitigation of it.
Is there anything that us as council or staff needed?
Not really, no.
Okay.
Not really, if something big happens, the county's gonna really drive, drive the train essentially, so. And then I act as the liaison between the city and the county, and then we just push forward. Different lines of communication would be open, most definitely, if something were to happen.
Okay.
Do we need any training for new city council members or anything? Because I know we did, like, training when I first started.
Yeah, we do some tabletops every once in a while when there's some hot button issues that come up. More than willing to come up with something, and we can do a tabletop or something.
Or if you wanted them to do that FEMA training?
Yeah, everyone should get FEMA training, if we, I can look through and see who has FEMA and who doesn't, and.
Probably not everybody.
I do, yeah.
Do you, Toby?
I do not.
Oh, I'll get you information, and then Marie would need it, so.
Yeah. And then Jackie and.
You've never done FEMA training?
You've done, and then Christie as well, I mean, mine was back in.
I do not have FEMA training either.
They've gotten away from the strictness of doing it than what it once used to be. It used to be like, you had to have it like within 30 days of being hired, and before you could get federal reimbursement money and stuff like that, but that's kind of gone by the wayside now, so. Now it's just kind of good to know information, sort of, so. Eight hours of your life you'll never get back.
Awful, but, whatever.
Any other questions for Kevin?
I'll make a motion then to appoint Kevin Triplet for fire chief for starting January 1, 26, to December of 27.
I will second. Any other discussion? Ms. Otto.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Von Toma.
Aye.
We'll vote aye, passes 5-0, congratulations.
Thank you. Number three is fire protection contracts, I'll leave that to Jackie.
So Kevin and I sat down and we came up with a new formula, based off of market value and call average, to start charging the townships starting in 2026. Started out great, and then the, we ended up getting called to Woodland and Marysville. They wanted the market value portion to be reevalued, because it was including all cropland. So they basically want it down to, like, the house plus one acre. Diving into it, it's gonna take a lot more work between myself and the county to get that market value figure correct, and we're not gonna have it anywhere near at this time. So after talking with chief, we decided that at this time for 2026, we would just do a $25 increase to $200 per parcel at each of the townships. We did meet with Woodland tonight at 5:30, and they agreed, I have a signed contract. But I do plan to continue to work with the county to see if we can get a correct valuation, because it is more fair, based off a percentage of the whole.
Yep.
So.
Thank you for your work on that, both of you.
Next item is sale of our old fire department trailer. So back a few months ago, we purchased a new trailer for our side-by-side, which leaves us our old one. We had write a first refusal within our relief association. I basically told guys, open for any reasonable offers. Nobody gave me a reasonable offer, we started bidding, and we got up to 250 bucks, I think. So looking for your guys' guidance and thoughts on which direction we should go with trying to sell it. I have a couple of emails into trailer places locally, to see if they buy used trailers outright, that would get us a starting price to play with, and then we can kind of go from there, or I can just go bring it right up to Lampy, or the other auction place up by Monticello, and just let it go. I guess I just probably need a little bit more direction.
I think go through the Brinkman and M&amp;G up there and see what they offer. I think if we can get, what, about 15 for it, give or take.
I mean, if the fire department refused it, I mean, I wouldn't have an issue checking with staff first before we sold it outright. Have to open it to everybody, though.
We would have to open it to everybody.
Yeah, it's basically extending our write-a-first refusal to city staff at that point. I would think we'd probably be fine doing it, as long as we're getting a reasonable offer. And I can go get a better firm number through those two trailer places, that would give us a starting point, but.
I'd say I believe it has to be at least a reasonable offer, it can't be like a low ball.
Correct, so it's gotta be in the ballpark of what they would.
Of what they would offer us.
Some more than the 250?
Unless they're gonna give us two.
350?
So I can investigate that a little bit more, get some firm numbers. I don't think it's causing any hassle down where it's parked right now or anything, so it's not rotting away.
If that's the case, and we want to open it up, do we want to put a deadline on that?
I think we should.
For staff?
Let me get the number first.
I'm just saying.
Well, yeah, we'll open it up for a week or two. It's not like we have a staff of 70 people, so. All right, last item in your packet is a resolution, Resolution 2025-21. This is a resolution to increase our para, which is our retirement amount. Currently, we sit at $5,000 per member per year. With this resolution, if it's passed, it would raise that $5,000 to $6,000 per year. Currently, we vest 40% at five years and 100% at 20 years. Currently, at our $5,000 level, we are 129.59% funded. We need to maintain 100% to not receive a bill from para. If we receive a bill, then we have to pay the bill to get us back to 100%. Raising to $6,000 per year with our current capital in the account puts us at 113.94% funded. So that gives us that 13% cushion that is there in case there is a bad market year, or whatever may happen. We're looking at different plans for the future, so that it triggers some kind of action from the fire chief to go and talk with staff if we hit a certain percentage, and then we can look at the numbers, look at what's happening in the world, and bring it to council. If there is some weird stuff, it might require a special workshop or something like that, where we can kind of lay things out a little bit more. But currently, at 129%, we want to put that money to work, rather than just let it sit there and do nothing, so. Para and our retirement is a big recruitment and retention tool. And it's something that we don't take lightly, and we're very happy and proud to have it at the level that we're at, so. But looking to put that money to work and change the benefit level from $5,000 to $6,000.
I don't remember, was it last year or the year before we discussed this?
Last year.
Last year, yep.
It was right around 129 last year, right?
I did the numbers, it was at 114, I think, when I played with the numbers. So in my head, that magic number where I would go take action, or go and have these discussions, would probably be like that 125 after talking with Jackie. And then Jackie, who understands numbers better than I do, can sit there and be like, yeah, it makes sense to probably go this figure or that figure, or here's kind of the thing. That way we have the backing and support of all the players involved. And then we'd never, in my mind also, we'd never want to really probably take it below that 110%, because that's, that's kind of a nice cushion to have. Over the course of the last year, we were at 114%, we're now at 129%. It was a good year.
It was a good year.
Well, and I will say, last year, we did say no, because the forecast of the market was not what it did.
Right.
It was not supposed to be as good as it was. So that's why we said no at the time last year.
And that was a big part of it with the election, and a lot of unknowns and stuff, and I expect that, some of the guys may not expect that or understand that necessarily, but I see that and stuff, and I want to be cautious. I'd rather not see a bill come from para. One time since we've been in para where we had a bill, and it was like for $4,000, which wasn't a big deal. That was easy to make up. It actually made up itself, but we don't want to see it where all of a sudden we're at 75%, because that's gonna be expensive.
Yep.
And you have three years to make that up, and hopefully the market turns around in that time, but.
Remind me where the money comes from?
We put now levy dollars into it, and then we get return on investment, the fire state aid goes into it. That's pretty much where it all comes from. Majority of it comes from the investment return. They estimate a 6% per year, when they start actualizing it out, year after year after year. So, and the 6% is actually a pretty good estimate for them. I think when I looked at their five and 10-year, it's sitting between like 5 and 1/4, and 8%, depending on how you play with the numbers.
Well, I think it's a good idea, I think, you know, you're giving yourself that cushion that you need. I think you're, you're setting it up to protect the department, so.
And one of the hardest things that we've had with this is, when we went into para, the city understood fully, fire department at the time understood fully, but a lot of people have a hard time letting go. The relief association has nothing to do with this retirement anymore. It's all on the city, and my capacity as the fire chief, or who's ever sitting in this position, that's where the discussions and the issues have to be dealt with, not within a board or a full membership or anything like that, so.
Yeah, I think at this point, I think this makes sense to do. So with that, I will look for a motion to, well, actually, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-21, Resolution opting to increase the benefit level for firefighters who are vested in the statewide volunteer firefighter plan.
I will second.
Any other discussions, questions for Kevin? Ms. Otto.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Von Toma.
I'll abstain.
I will vote aye, passes 3-02.
Do we need a motion for the fire contracts? The increase? Just to be safe?
Just because we're charging. Yep.
Yeah.
Probably not a bad idea.
Yep.
So with that, I will make a motion to approve the fire protection contracts for Franklin, Marysville, and Woodland townships, increasing the rate from 175 to 200 per parcel.
I will second.
You both can't second at the same time.
I will second.
Any discussion? Ms. Otto.
Aye.
Mr. Von Toma.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
I'll vote aye, passes 5-0.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin. Planning and zoning.
Mayor and Council included in the packet for this evening were the August 13 minutes. The topic we are discussing right now is about rental properties, and possibly doing something, putting something in place to limit either the number that one entity or person can own, or a limit to the number citywide, or by subarea or district. So Steve is working to get a bunch of information about how many rental properties we currently have, and to see how we can make it work for us. The issue is that it seems like a lot of times when the houses are going up for sale in the town, they're getting bought by companies and being turned into rental properties. So it is becoming a bit of an issue, and we want to put something in place possibly to protect the city for the future, because it, it kind of takes away all the naturally affordable housing.
Oh, I think it's a great idea. I know there's a couple houses in my neighborhood that are owned by corporations.
And it often turns into blight situations, because the renter either isn't there, or the property manager isn't, you know, paying attention, and keeping those up to code, so.
Absolutely, just no skin in the game.
Yeah. So we will be discussing further in October, since Steve is still doing much research on that, so.
Any questions for Jess on planning and zoning? Cool. Park and Rec, come on down.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Quick updates, we had a quick conversation about our, the park float for Celebrate Montrose, so then, very successful parade, was it 50 or so?
Yep, 50.
Wonderful job. 46, all right, that's 50 in my book.
You can take four.
Might not be in your packet, but you might have seen some of the Christmas sponsorship letter. We're seeking permission to send out, and in conjunction with the Fire Relief Association, 12-12 meets and Grace Place. Just kind of asking for, towards the season of giving, to kind of help those that are in some need, so. Just looking for permission to send this copy out through fire, I believe it's through Fire Relief Association.
I'll make a motion to approve sending out the sponsorship letter for sponsors, for families in need, through Park and Rec.
I'll second. Any discussion? Mr. Von Toma.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Otto.
Aye.
I'll vote aye, passes 5-0.
Wonderful, we have movies in the park this Friday, so far, weather looks good, movie's starting at dusk, it is Dog Man. We are working, I'm working with Christie for some grant development. There's a grant application for a grant provider, that's some kind of fun, sick irony, about kind of looking for that process to see other, potential other larger grants. And we've been also talking to some structure folk about updating some of the park, and Parks and Rec staff, we went out and visited some of the parks. Mostly keep, mostly keeps up with the Park and Rec trail plan. Haven't really seen anything that kind of deviates too far out. But, yeah, most of the parks looking good, minor graffiti here and there. Other than that, our next meeting is October 7th, 5:30. Oh, and then we also have a applicant, Phil Fogroski, put in his application for Parks and Rec, so I look for a motion to approve him to enjoy the chaos.
I will make a motion to accept Philip Goski as a new commission member for Park and Rec.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Otto.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Von Toma.
Aye.
I'll vote aye, passes 5-0.
That is it for me, Council, unless you have any other questions, comments, concerns?
Any questions? Nope. Much.
Thank you.
City engineer, welcome back, Jared.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Item in your packet this evening is related to the Local Road Improvement Program grant. Back at the August meeting, Council did authorize staff to prepare a Local Road Improvement Program grant for the Clementa Avenue Street Improvement Project. As most of you indicated in your council updates this evening, August 27th, there was a joint meeting held between the county, Marysville Township, and the city council. During that meeting, there's discussions surrounding application for that program by both the township and the city. Ultimately, that project, same project we applied for last year, full-depth reclamation, improvement of the street. But ultimately, this evening, since Council's already authorized the city's application, we wanted to follow up based on some of those discussions at the meeting to determine whether or not there was any interest from this body to submit a application on behalf of the township, should they so elect to support it.
Yeah, I actually had a conversation with Commissioner Moynha on this, and through some conversations he had down at Wright County, he thought that this would probably be a really good course of action for us to take. Anything we can do to get that paved? So I am all on board here. Any questions for Jared with it? Hearing no questions, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion for Jared to proceed with the LRIP, and working with Marysville and Clementa Avenue.
I will second. Any further discussion?
I know we'll be waiting for Marysville to have their next township meeting, for them to approve that, so this will be good, so we can just start going as soon as they do that. I have reached out to them about that, so, waiting here back, but.
Perfect. Hearing no other questions, Mr. Von Toma.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Otto.
Aye.
I'll vote aye, passes 5-0. Jared?
Thank you, Council.
Any questions for Jared on anything? Do you have any updates?
Maybe just quickly, the wastewater regionalization project. Wetland delineations have been completed, cultural resources staff is working on their pieces of that. The purpose of that is because of the funding that we're pursuing, which is through the Public Facilities Authority. They do require SHPO and a variety of other reviews, so that's the purpose of that. Notices were sent out, as a matter of fact, before the meeting this evening, I got a call from one resident that had some questions, so we were able to take care of those, and then survey work is starting, so. Looking to continue to move that project forward, we're anticipating that the draft PPL will be out. I think it's this Friday, is what we've been told. I wouldn't hold my breath on that, we've heard that in years past, but generally speaking, I would anticipate the month of September sometime, we'll be seeing that list. So hopefully, the project ranks, ranks high, and funding, and everything can continue to move forward, so. With that, that is all I had this evening, unless Council has questions of me.
Council? All right, thanks, Jared. Alright, thanks Jared.
Thanks.
Public Works Danny?
Uh, mayor, council, I really have nothing. No real updates, I guess.
Are you sure?
No money?
It's not like you.
Talking with the engineers during our engineer meeting last time, we are gonna get a team together and do a survey on our stormwater ponds and so on, but it's not gonna be like done in like a month, so. Um, got some, I think everything you guys approved for the ball field and Veterans Park is gonna get tended out hopefully before the snow flies, but it's gonna be a year end fall job for this guy. Um, other than that, I don't really have anything.
Perfect, any questions for Danny?
Danny, there's, uh, seems to be somebody dropped off a bunch of junk over on Third Street. Uh, right on the corner there by the street stop sign. Um, wondering if we can go, have somebody go grab that and pick it up?
Yep, we can.
Thank you.
The free stuff?
Well, it was free and now they just dumped it there.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the.
I was trying to find the post.
So Dan, just a question on the ponds?
Yeah.
Do you know like an approximate? Cause when we were doing touring the parks last week with the commission, um, we were out at Northridge and Regional and you can't even really notice that there's a pond out at Regional anymore? And then there were comments, there was, um, residents out at Northridge. Concerned about the pond in that area as well?
No, there hasn't been really a timeline put together when we were gonna do this as of yet. Um, I don't know when our next engineer meeting is, is it next week? We'll talk about it more then, but. Feel free to have those residents actually take their concerns and actually call us, cause that's the first I've heard of any residents in Northridge having concerns about their stormwater pond.
I think we just got lucky and we're all out there. And they were out there as well, so. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, moving on to old business. Employee assistance program that we tabled from August.
Um, mayor and council staff did find out that the Forty-Niners do have, um, employee assistance program. The AFSMI union took a while getting back to us and, um, Jackie is currently waiting to hear back from health partners about their program that is available. Cause they do have something, we're just kind of trying to see exactly what it entails and how beneficial it is.
So with both unions having something.
Well, AFSMI doesn't have anything.
They don't have anything?
Nothing.
Okay.
They, they told us to look at health partners.
At health partners.
It's covered through the medical plan.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. So, I mean, we've got the one proposal on the table, do we want to wait to hear back from the health partners?
I think we wait, yeah, let's wait to hear back and then if it doesn't cover enough, then that might be worthwhile getting for, for everybody, you know?
Okay. So let's go ahead and table this till October already? Geez, yeah, Christmas, okay.
October is not Christmas.
I mean, it's Halloween, it's close enough.
It's Sam's Christmas.
It's my Christmas.
The hunter, professional.
Here we go. Alright, moving along, new business, twenty twenty-six preliminary budget and levy.
Uh, mayor and council included in your packet tonight is, uh, the final preliminary levy, which we are certifying um, following our budget workshop that we had. Uh, the only changes since that meeting was the, uh, additional one hundred thousand capital that we discussed to add. And then I added in numbers for, uh, the Minnesota paid leave, which begins January first, and I went on the high end. Guessing that we're not gonna be on the high end when we eventually start doing it. Um, so those were the only two changes made since meeting.
I forgot to ask during our budget meeting, um, you guys recommended that Celebrate Montrose come and ask, um, for funding? Is that at all?
This is due.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Yeah, we, we did not receive a request. No, I did not. Cause no, no one asked.
Yeah.
Or for an amount.
Okay.
Any questions for Jackie? No? Do we need a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six preliminary budget and levy.
I will second.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Von Toma?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, passes five oh. Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
Next on the list?
Uh, next item is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three. This is the, um, point of sale certification for sanitary sewer service compliance. This is the one that is required in order for us to join with the regionalization for the wastewater. Um, it just requires homeowners to have their sewer line camered once every five years, um, once it's sold, correct?
Mainly if they go to sell it.
If they go to sell it, they have it camered and then that certification is good for five years.
It's good for five years.
Yep.
Any questions on that?
That's, that's tied directly to sa- sale of property, right?
To the sale of property, um.
Sale of property only. So when it's up for sale is when they, hopefully before they sell it, but.
And it's directly tied towards us regionalizing with.
This is.
It helps with the INI and helps with, um, water leaking from the system basically and it helps keep the system tighter. Um, other cities that have enacted this have seen great reductions in their INI. And it's required and recommended, so.
This is, uh, a mirror image of Waverly, Howard Lake and a little bit of Annandale all mixed into this one.
Perfect. Alright, with that, I will make a motion for approving ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three. Ordinance amending chapter thirty-three of the city code at a new section, thirty-three dot nineteen pertaining to point of sale certification of sanitary sewer service compliance.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Von Toma?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, passes five oh.
Uh, the next, the resolution is to authorize summary publication of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash two-two. A resolution authorizing the summary publication of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Von Toma?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, passes five oh.
Um, mayor and council, the next item is another ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash zero four. This is to regulate, um, massage businesses and services. This has been recommended, um, to us to adopt by Wright County. They brought in a model ordinance for us, um, a couple of months ago and we had our city attorney look at it and this was the final product.
It's pretty straightforward, it just protects the city a little bit. So with that, I'd be looking for a motion.
I will make a motion to accept resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. Resolution authorizing summary publica- oh, that's a different one.
Go back.
Instead, I'll make a motion to accept twenty twenty-five dash zero four. Ordinance amending title seven business regulations by adding a new chapter regulating massage businesses and services.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Otto?
Aye.
And Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Von Toma?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, passes five oh.
Then there is an accompanying resolution to authorize summary publication twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three.
I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. Resolution authorizing summary publication of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four.
I will second.
Any discussion? Mr. Von Toma?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, passes five oh. Alright, so now we got a proclamation recognizing National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Whereas Infant, whereas Infants Remembered in Silence, Inc. and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over the state of Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy through early childhood. And whereas many of these parents live in, deliver in, and deliver in, have a child die in or bury a child in our community. And whereas Infants Remembered in Silence, Inc., a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, was founded in nineteen eighty-seven, thirty-eight years ago to offer support for parents whose children slash, or child slash children died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, still bo- still birth, neonatal death, birth defects, sudden unexplained death of a child, sudden infant death syndrome, illness, accidents and all other type of infants and early childhood death. And whereas bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on October fifteenth with candle lighting at seven PM. Some will remember their child, children in the homes, while others will remember them in small gatherings across the state, across the nation and around the world. And this would unify these parents in tribute to their children. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. And whereas in honor of thousands of children that die each year in Minnesota, Infants Remembered in Silence, Inc. respectfully requests that October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Montrose, Minnesota, this day, this eighth day of September, twenty twenty-five. I have no open form requests, so upcoming meetings, uh, planning and zoning has been canceled. EDA canceled. Our, let's see, city council workshop Monday, September twenty-ninth, four PM, Montrose City Hall. Uh, Park and Rec, Tuesday, October seventh, five thirty at Montrose City Hall. Regular city council meeting, Monday, October thirteenth, seven PM, right here at the Montrose Community Center. Acknowledgements, recognitions, announcements.
I'd like to acknowledge Celebrate Montrose and the Montrose Fire Department for all the work you guys put in. It did not go unnoticed for sure, as well as city staff. Um, I know you guys did a lot of work for the parade and getting the grounds ready. And I'd like to acknowledge the Dusky and Carver family for the Alzheimer tournament they put on again this last weekend.
Wasn't busy, I missed it this year.
Yeah, it was a good time, actually, I was kind of looking for you.
I was working. That work thing?
Yep.
Yeah, so, um, I have a couple too, along with Toby, I wanna, the Celebrate Montrose Board, the Fire Department for their pork chop feed, their help with the parade and allowing us to use the Fire Department for the beanbags. Grace Place Lions Scouts Feed, Methodist Church Untied, Scott Alis chest. Um, Bolton Mink for sponsoring us, Carpentry Contractors, the Chamber for doing the beanbags. Twelve twelve, of course, for everything that they do. City staff for helping us put everything together, um, with all the barricades and everything. Uglies, Tuffys, Hickmans, the Bank, the Legion, Republic and the Wright County Reserves for helping us as well. I think that's it, you can have the list.
Anything else? You know what I'm looking for.
Motion to adjourn.
Now you're a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's the scoring game?
We are adjourned, seven forty-four.